Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. All right, next item on the agenda is the report of the Mayor and City Council. I'll start with Councilman Sidnor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October the fifteenth, like most of the council members, I attended the Main Street Festival. I also attended one year twenty annual Laurel Volunteer Fire Fire Award Ceremony. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilman Cole?
Good evening, Mr. President, staff and guests. Much like Mr. Sidnor, I also attended Main Street Festival and the Fire Department's annual awards banquet. On the twentieth, I took a tour of Fidos for Freedom to learn more about their organization and the services that they provide to their clients. And also on the twentieth, I attended the Laurel Citizens University that evening. It was great to see the turnout. We have a lot of citizens that are going through that course. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Councilman DeWalt?
Nothing to report, but I want to welcome everybody here from Casa and the great work that you do. The head of Lars was here, Shannon. And there's our legislator and the person that everybody needs to vote for, sitting there in the second row is Mary Lehman. She's, go ahead, stand up, Mary, so everybody knows you. And so I highly recommend that you do that. And all my good friends and Helen from Katz. And Tom Benoga's office is here. And a lot, a lot of people, good friends, my neighbors, and all from the community, Ruth Walls, and I saw her husband. And things, and I just want to appreciate all your attendance here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Council President Smith. To start my report, on October thirteenth, we had our Citizens Advisory Commission Committee for Disabilities. And we also had October fifteenth, I was able to celebrate on Main Street. We had the Main Street Festival come back. And definitely got to connect with a lot of old friends and, you know, made new friends as well. Also that day, I was able to attend fellow municipal leader Rick Gordon's engagement party in the city of Greenbelt. And then on October sixteenth, I was able to attend Sunday Fun Day at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Open House. It was well attended and, you know, the community got to learn a lot about that fire department. And, you know, for anybody who doesn't know, you know, that fire department was the, you know, the first to respond when I had a house fire my senior year in high school. So, you know, definitely continue to, you know, support them and uplift them. October twentieth, I had a speaking engagement at a Yes on Question Four rally at the Impact Hub in Baltimore. And I was joined by Marijuana Policy Project, the Yes on Four Chairman and former NFL player Eugene Monroe, State Delegate and Baltimore City Chair Stephanie Murphy and Deborah Ramsey from former police officer for Sensible Drug Policy. October twenty first, I was able to attend Montgomery County Voter Bash. So Casa Sister Organization Casa in Action. And we went to Elvegavon, Elve, Elgavon Restaurant. At least that's, you know, the best of my pronunciation. October twenty second, I went to the Rhythm Roll-Up Skate Jam Contest where I also spoke on and educated people about Question Four and Yes on Question Four. After that, I went to Southern Maryland, Chesapeake. And I spoke on Question Four. I was joined by Luke Jones, former Executive Director of MD Normal, National Organization of Reform of Marijuana Laws and State Delegate C.T. Wilson. I was then able to join the NAACP Annual State Convention where I hosted a panel on GOTV and ballot initiatives going on throughout the state. And I was joined by Delegate Asavero, Delegate Davon Love for Ladies of Beautiful Struggle, and Julio GOTV from Casa. I want to give a shout out to a dear, a dear neighbor of ours, Kathy Peterson, who had her annual cleanup this weekend in Oktoberfest celebration. Of course, due to all the celebrations, I was excited, but wasn't able to make it. On October twenty third, I want to also give a shout out to Laurel resident Calandre Young for the Laurel Lakes Cleanup, where they had a two-hour cleanup of Laurel Lakes. I was able to attend the Children's Halloween Carnival at our American Legion Laurel Post. It was very well attended and, you know, if anybody saw pictures, I had a costume on and I was Yoshi, the kids were Mario and Luigi, you know, it was a great time. And definitely want to thank them for putting on that event. And then on October thirtieth, I want to just, you know, remind people of doing my second annual trunk retreat at Summerlin Place Apartments. And, you know, with that being said, I want to thank the general public who came out tonight to participate in this public hearing. And I appreciate everyone for expressing their thoughts and concerns openly and directly. And I have heard you for several months, and I hear you now. So thank you for showing up.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. I'd like the rest of the council and the mayor, who's not here. He's away on a planned trip. I was at the Main Street Festival. It was wonderful to see everyone out, seeing the city active on Main Street and seeing all the smiling faces. And I also was at the Hundred Twentieth Annual Award Banquet for the Fire Department here, the Volunteer Fire Department. So congratulations to them. And I'll echo my colleagues in saying thank you for coming out. We're appreciative that you're here. We want to hear from you. We don't do any process without checking with our community. So, thank you. And then I'm gonna, so before we get to the general public hearing, I just want to say that each person will have three minutes to speak. So please be respectful of the next person's time. I'll stop you when the time is up. But I just want you guys just to be aware of that. And again, this is us, for us to listen to you, hear you, so we can take that into consideration when we go into our special work session. And I believe Councilman DeWalt had one more thing to say.
One more thing. This Thursday is Trick or Treat on Main Street. If you've never attended that, I would highly recommend it. They block off Main Street pretty much completely. So they might let some traffic through, but the kids enjoy it. It's very safe. Laurel Police will be out there. I see Deputy Chief Plazinsky back there. They'll be out there in full force. And it's very safe. It's a great event for the family, and it's packed with kids, and the costumes are absolutely fabulous. So if you've never been there or you want to attend, please attend. And it's guaranteed your child is gonna get a lot of candy.
All right, well, moving on to the agenda item number four, which is the general public hearing, which you all are here for. So, all right, Madam Clerk, I have the sheet, but I see that there is fourteen people signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that wants to speak? All right. Well, I'm gonna open the public hearing at six oh nine P.M. And I'm gonna call in the first name. I have Maria Rivera. Please state your name and address and come to the front.
Hi, my name is Maria Rivera. I live at forty-four B Street. I'm a resident of Laurel for the past five years. I worked in Laurel for the past twelve years. I live on B Street and apartment next to me is C Street Flats. And I'm here today because I came to the city of Laurel about two years ago concerning the parking. The city of Laurel issued me a permit. The permit has since expired, two thousand twenty. The issue that I'm here today is that the resident of C Street Flats, I have pictures, I can pass it along, has threatened me for the parking. They said that they have permits also. I have a handicap sticker for my doctor. It's a temporary. When I come home in the evening, there's no parking as I approach. Getting very bad. The permit expired. I need a space to park. You know, if I park in the back, there's an issue. Can't come up because the road is dirty, the aisle is dirty, and it's getting really ridiculous. There's no space at all. There's only three houses on that street at all. And there's no space for us, even though we have a permit. It's like the city of Laurel just abandoned us. What can we do to park there as residents? So that's my chief complaint today concerning that. I feel like I should have a right to park. I know it's a city street, but they have places to park. I've gone and complained to the management. They don't do anything. Nothing.
Well, I'll say that doesn't fall on deaf ears. I'll have the city, we'll follow back up with you. Yeah, thank you for that comment. We'll look into that. All right, I have Delegate Mary Lehman?
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, Council President Smith and distinguished council members. For the record, I'm Delegate Mary Lehman, and I reside at sixteen two zero four Jolene Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two oh seven oh seven. I represent the Laurel area in the Maryland General Assembly, and I serve on the Environment Committee, which is where we hear all of the housing bills. I've submitted my written statement to the clerk. I'm honored to be here tonight to support the important rent stabilization bill put forth by council members Martin Mitchell and Carl DeWalt. I want to applaud them both for their leadership on what is an urgent problem. Rising rents are displacing more and more residents because under city, county, and state law, there currently are no limits on rent increases year to year. Now, folks here tonight may disagree about how to balance rent or protections with the ability of landlords to earn a living, but there can be no debate about the following. Wages are not keeping up with inflation. Rent increases of ten, twenty, thirty percent or more are not affordable for most working people. And unchecked, some landlords, not all, but some, as we saw over the summer at Patuxent Place, will, with no warning, attempt to impose enormous double-digit rent increases just because they can. I believe rent stabilization is a fair and appropriate response to this crisis. I am a former two-term Prince George's County Councilwoman. I spent three years on the council trying to bring back the county's Affordable Housing Law, which was repealed in nineteen ninety-six. I could not get that bill at a committee and finally gave up. However, I have continued to fight for tenant rights at the state level, including a bill I supported before my committee in the twenty twenty-two session requiring that landlords give tenants ninety days' notice, simple notice, of a rent increase of four percent or more. The bill passed the House but was squashed over in the Senate by landlords and their lobbyists. I have seen this again and again and again at the county and the state levels. The landlords have all the power, the tenants have very little. I have heard that some who favor tenant supports would rather the county or the state take on these difficult issues. And I wish we would as well. But I'm here to tell you, it's not for lack of trying, and I will certainly continue my efforts on this front in Annapolis over the next four years. And I know the primary sponsor of that notification bill, Delegate Melissa Wells, plans to reintroduce that legislation in twenty twenty-three, and I will do everything I can to help her. But I am here tonight actually to encourage you all, to say that the city can be a leader on rent affordability. You have the ability under state law to enact a citywide rent stabilization law, and it's a good one. It really is. This bill by Councilmen Mitchell and DeWalt is balanced. It limits increases to no more than three percent of the current rent, but it creates a process for landlords to request an exception based on planned capital improvements, changes in property taxes, and other factors that affect their ability to earn what's called a fair return on their investment. The bill has other important provisions like a rental registry, but I strongly believe the most important provision is the three percent limit on rent increases. So council members, I know that you want, I want, we all want stable, safe neighborhoods. And we all know the most stable communities are those with low turnover. We want residents who remain long-term and get involved and raise their fit kids here and join local organizations and come to the Main Street Festival and spend their discretionary money here. They make the best neighbors on so many levels, but they can't stay and be good neighbors if they can't afford to live here. If you take the lead and enact this law, you'll make such a positive difference in the lives of so many people. But you'll also make the city an even stronger and better place to live. I urge your support of this legislation, and I thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for coming out, Delegate. Thank you for that testimony, Delegate Lehman. Next on our list, we have, excuse me if I pronounce your name wrong, Javaz Huntington?
Hello? Hi, my name is Javaz Huntington. I live in Patuxent Place on Main Street. I've lived in PG County for eleven years and in Laurel for four years. I'm here to represent Patuxent Place and all the people of Laurel. A few months ago, my building was bought out by a new owner, a new manager. I think the same guy who's pretty much bought up all of the buildings in Laurel. I got my rent increase. It was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's was like a forty-five percent increase. I have a one-bedroom, actually a studio, that was going up to twenty-one hundred dollars a month. I'm here to ask for rent stabilization. I'm also here to represent my neighbor. If you see the empty wheelchair in the back, I have a neighbor who lives below me, also at Patuxent Place. She's in her thirties. She's permanently disabled due to long COVID. Her rent increased almost five hundred dollars a month. She couldn't be here tonight because she just doesn't have the strength or stamina to fight. But I'm here to represent both her and myself and everyone else here. I also want to thank Carl DeWalt and Martin Mitchell for helping us along with Casa as far as like, we were able to negotiate a thirteen percent rent increase versus a forty-five percent increase. But we know that that time is gonna end. And when that time ends, we don't want our rent to increase forty, fifty, sixty percent. So we kindly ask, please have our best interests at heart, and please approve the rent stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Alina Keneely?
Hi, thank you. My name is Alina Keneely. I live at five eight five Main Street, apartment three four three, which is also part of Patuxent Place. And I would like to follow up from what Javaz said. I have lived in Laurel for my entire life. I am from a large family, and I feel like I did everything right, so to speak, scholarship through college, saved up to move out into a one, a single bedroom in a shared house when I was twenty-four. Just in two thousand twenty, I finally saved up enough that I was comfortable renting a one-bedroom apartment of my own. Last year, or a couple months ago, the new owner tried to increase my rent by four hundred dollars. This would have been twenty-five percent. And that would have forced me to move. I know mine is not as steep an increase as other people have gotten, however, four hundred dollars is the difference between being able to save up for emergencies and living by the skin of your teeth. And all the other places in Laurel and in the general Maryland area have risen similarly. I feel like this is absolutely absurd, and I feel like there should be some sort of stabilization. I am I am a programmer. Haven't helped anybody who lost their job or did something else during COVID. That is my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darrell Darrell Tolas, Tolas? Tolas?
I live at six twenty-five Main Street, Patuxent Place. Me and my wife, we moved up here about four years ago in Laurel. And I'll be honest, at first, I was not happy to move to Maryland, but living in Laurel actually grew on me. And recently, we had a six hundred dollar rent increase. It's about forty-five percent. As far as money goes, you know, not really strapped for it, but six hundred dollars is like a total life-saving change. Like, it's not like, oh shit, I gotta put a hundred dollars aside. It's like six hundred bucks. Could be like a car payment. Especially cars nowadays are not, not cheap. It actually pushed us to look for a house. And through this time, we've been looking for a house, probably be getting one. But they're not cheap either. And luckily, we were able to get the rent down to thirteen percent so we can kind of move out before our time's up. But, yeah, I just think there should be some type of cap on the rent increase, because that's kind of crazy, like forty-five percent. That's like if, like, you brought me your car and like, I was like, okay, it's gonna be eight hundred dollars a verse, a hundred dollars without you knowing. It's kind of ridiculous, in my opinion. So I'm just here to support everyone for not to be homeless or anything like that. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Next, I have Ellen, Ellen Lins? Lovins? Ellen? Lyons. There you go.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ellen Lyons. And I reside at seventy-nine oh one Laurel Lakes Senior Building. Before I retired from the federal government, War Three National Military Center. But before I retired, I looked for me a church, I would look for me a church home here in Laurel. I've been here in Laurel for about seventeen years. I wasn't happy with the rent control when I, the rent when I was paying the rent. So I got into the Senior Citizen Building. Not that I'm satisfied with the amount that I'm paying. But I had found me a church home, but I never thought I would lose it here in Laurel. I had a Senior Citizen Building, and now I have a church home. I'm comfortable. But then this came along, this non-rent control, and the landlord jacked the rent up on our church, nine forty-four Fourth Street. They jacked it up, one thousand dollars. My pastor didn't know what to do about the issue, and because we only had ten days to either pay the double rent or lose our church. And of course, we, I lost my church home. Everybody's talking about the rent for their home, but to lose a church home, no more fellowship? It's kind of sad. My children came, took me to North Carolina, said, you don't belong here. You can't afford it. Laurel is my home. I'm begging you, please, do something about the stabilization of the rent. When I spoke to Councilman Mitchell, he introduced me to Casa. Hallelujah. Thank you for Casa. Thank God for Casa. The new Martin Luther King on the ride. Support Casa one hundred percent with this rent stabilization. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I have next Kia Jefferson?
Hello, good evening. I'm back. I'm gonna keep coming back. Every time you guys have a meeting and this is not passed, I'm gonna share my story. You guys are gonna know my story in your sleep. I've lived in this, I'm from Patuxent Place. Alina, the young lady who says she saved up for her first apartment, is my direct neighbor. I remember the day she moved in. Her mom was so proud. She was asking me all types of questions where I worked and, who's, who's, who's mom's asking me all these questions? But I could see the pride on her face. And through seventeen years of living there, I've got a lot of great stories like that. Those stories are coming to an end because I got an eight hundred dollar increase with a twenty-three day notice. Got the email at nine o'clock at night. That's enough to make you want to scream. But thank God for Casa. Worked with them, was able to get the rent from a fifty-six percent increase to a thirteen point five, which is still a lot of money. I would like to be a homeowner. I'd like to be able to save up. We need this rent stabilization bill, and we need it now. How will I ever be able to afford to become a homeowner? What it's saying to me is if, if I can pay an extra $800 more a month, that means it's time for me to go. That means I'm not valued as a Laurel resident or a tenant, and that my money should be somewhere else. But if you pass this law, maybe I won't feel like that, and maybe we all can stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Linda Thomas.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna take my hat off because this is a solemn occasion, okay? Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. I am excited to be here. I'm the president of the NAACP for Prince George's County. And I come to you today not because I am the president, because I understand that when things get tight, you need additional money. And if you don't have it, what, what happens to you? And this is what's gonna happen with many of these individuals. Without having the support, without making the changes, without putting in new bills, without doing something, they are not going to have a home. So where do they go? That's my question. And although we are a civil rights organization, we are concerned about housing, very much so. Because we are out there, when someone doesn't have a place to go, we try to find them some resources, such as CASA and everyone else. The problem that we have is that there is no place to go in Prince George's County. Those homes now are being built in several areas for a million dollars. Where do we get that money from? I don't know. What I'm asking you is that if we start doing something in Laurel, and you make a big change here, and this is where we can begin, because the foundation can start right here. We can use the same bill, and we can share that bill with our legislators, as Mayor Lehman has said. We can also talk about our state and go to our, whoever's gonna be our next governor, and say to that governor, we need some additional monies, we need some policies, we need laws. And I think we can make a difference, because it's not just happening here in Laurel. It's happening in Hyattville, and Bladensburg, and Clinton, all over the place. And the prices are going up and up. And you know what? I talked to a couple of developers, you know what they said? People who are buying these wonderful places that they say, oh, they just need a little bit of maintenance, so I'm just gonna increase it a little bit. What they were saying to me is that they can afford it. How do you know people's income? I don't know. But that's the first thing they said. Well, you know what? We have to take care of this and fix the grounds and do all of these other things, so we need to increase. And then they also told me that young people don't need a house that they can buy. They need to just rent all the time and to lease all the time. Now, that is ridiculous. But they're coming in, and we're, and they're just purchasing from New York and New Jersey, and it's an unfortunate thing. And nobody is saying people can't make money, but there's enough wealth for all of us. We don't need to be greedy, all right? But we do need you guys to do a special thing, and that's passing this bill, allowing the opportunity for other municipalities to do the same thing. And let's take it across the state. Let's not just do it here. Let's just take it everywhere we can possibly be, because people now are dying from not having the right to live in a place. And we have a lot of veterans that are also suffering. So I want to thank you for the opportunity. And I also want to just say one thing. I want to say celebration to your police department, your chief of police, and your deputy police officers. And I'm gonna tell you, I am so proud of them. They have worked so hard. They've been working with us on a lot of issues, and without their support, we wouldn't be able to do some of the things that we're doing. We're not crazy about the county. We know that there's a whole lot of things going on. We're praying for them. But, but you know, but we still need to make things work, and we can't do that if we don't have a collective group of people working together as partners. And so I do want to thank you, and also Martin for being so supportive. And Councilwoman DeWalt, thank you so much for the work that you've done. And I want to put my hat back on, because I'm gonna say, look, we can do this together, can we not? All right? Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Next, I have Maria Rivera. Mama? 44 B Street, Laurel. Maria, that's, there's no Maria?
She already spoke. She was the first speaker today.
Oh, she signed twice? Okay. Next, I have Joan Sterling.
Good evening. My name is Joan Sterling. I live at 525 Patuxent Place, 401. Thank you so much for having, having us here. I really appreciate all the support that Councilman DeWalt and Mitchell have shown for a lot of my fellow residents at Patuxent Place, along with other residents that reside in the city. I'm actually from Laurel, born and raised in this area, and I relocated to Long Island in 2003. And then I came back to Laurel in 2017 to help my sister with elder care. I have a 90-year-old elderly mom who also lives in Laurel, but in the Howard County part of Laurel. That said, when I decided to move back to Laurel, I've been both a homeowner and a renter, so I see both sides of housing perspectives. I wanted to live in Patuxent Place. One thing I appreciated when I lived in Long Island was just quaint-type village-style community living. So when I moved back, I quickly embraced living on Main Street, reconnecting with old friends, and also making new neighbors that I never knew before I moved back. So my experience at Patuxent Place has been wonderful. The previous owner, rent increases were very consistent and stable. Typically, they would go about 3% to 5%, depending on your leasing options. So when I got word that, after CRE had bought the building, hearing these crazy rumors that people's rents were going up hundreds and hundreds of dollars, I had a lot of anxiety and just kept waiting and waiting for my lease renewal, thinking I'd get it the typical 90 days in advance. Finally, I just picked up the phone and called the leasing agent, and over the phone, she said, your rent's gonna go up $625 for a studio apartment unrenovated. I just, I knew it was coming, but to hear it over the phone, it was, it was awful. I panicked. Next thing you know, I'm looking at renting apartments in Sykesville near where I work. Well, that wouldn't help when you have a 90-year-old mom and a sister that works full-time. I have serious elder care issues. Meanwhile, I'm waiting and waiting for that renewal letter to come in. And at that point, I'm thinking, I'm just gonna suck it up and sign the lease for a year and hope for the best. But you know where that money towards rent? I wouldn't have been able to fund my 401K. You know, and I'm not a millennial, I'm of a certain age. I really need to, you know, keep the savings going to fund my retirement. So with that said, I spoke to Councilman DeWalt and Mitchell, and I really appreciate all of the efforts that were made, at least to keep me and my other fellow residents here for another year. I sort of look at this issue as middle-of-the-road. I'm not necessarily always, you know, a big rent control, government control all the time for, for things like this. But at the very least, maybe consider a tenant's advocacy bill, where if the rents were to go up a substantial amount, there's justification that you have more than 60 days. It should be 90 days or even more. Or that if you have to break the lease or you have other, other options. I would like the city to at least start there. But I definitely can, can understand some sort of rent control, but I also like to see it from, from both perspectives. That's good for the tenants and also for the landlord. Thank you in advance for considering my suggestions and thoughts. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Next, I have Jeanette. Jeanette? Please, speaking to Mike?
I'm, I'm in the middle of the ocean, so I have to drink the water. I am from Tacoma Park. I heard about the problem which is going on in Laurel here concerning the rent. We have the same issue in Tacoma. And I would like everybody in this hall to come and support me in the next meeting that we are going to hold in Tacoma. Because I live in, I live in a building. Last month, we had an explosion in, in our building. And then the council came and said, the building was not good for, for people to live there. But we are still living there up to today. And the rent is going up. I took my apartment in 2006. I've, I've been in that apartment for 17 years. Nothing has been changed. I have never broken a window. Everything is still intact. But this year, when I asked them to renovate just my carpet, they increased $75 for them to change the carpet and even the paint in the house. And I think most residents are experiencing, they are experiencing the same thing. So I would like you, member of the council of Laurel, to also assist the member of the council in Tacoma, so, so, so that we should live peacefully and in a healthy environment. I think I was not supposed to speak, but when I came in, I saw people writing their name. I just put my name. I thought it was just for the attendance. But luckily, I have to share my experience with you. This is, this is the ticket we, this is on my deal. Just after the explosion. We are still living there. We are increasing the rent every day. That's all what I can say. I'm a French speaking.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I have Ruth Wells.
Good evening, and thank you very much for having me here tonight. I just really want to speak from the heart tonight. I'm a registered nurse, and I have a nonprofit, and I work with a lot of homeless people. I get a lot of phone calls. Sometimes I'm up, sometimes I don't sleep too well, thinking about where people are gonna go. I don't think a lot of people understand that housing vouchers are really hard to get. People wait for years. Sometimes lists are so long, you can't even get on the list because there's no room anymore. People sit on housing voucher lists and die. This is really a crisis, and really, all of us should be in this together. Like I said outside, this is a domino effect. You know, when people are hurting and put out and their rent's put up, everybody's affected, because where are people gonna go? What happens to the children? What happens to their schools and their friends? When you displace everybody, people suffer, and sometimes afterwards, they need more supportive services wherever they go. And you think the system's taxed now? Just take all that into account. I mean, we all have to be responsible for this. You know, you drive down the road, you see people's belongings out front. You see clothes and furniture broken. I mean, we should all be saying, what happened to that person? Where did they go? How did it get to this point? Where are they now? We all need to be a part of this. And I know every person up here is a caring person. And I'm feeling really hopeful that this is gonna pass. I really think it will, because each person up here cares. I know that you do. Otherwise, you wouldn't be sitting in the seat that you're in, and you wouldn't have been voted for. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. I believe I have another Marie at 2209 Greenview. No? The handwriting is terrible. I'm sorry. I'm gonna move on to the next person. Novia?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nubia Martinez. Yo vivo en el 8110 Gorman Avenue in Laurel West Gate Apartment. Yo he vivido en esta area por diez años. El impacto de mi renta que ha subido muy alto. Yo antes pagaba $1,329, y ahora me estoy pagando $1,630. Para mí, yo tengo seis hijos. Tres de mis hijos están conmigo, van a la escuela. Y tengo que estar en esa pelea de día a día de cómo voy a pagar mi renta, cómo voy a pagar mi luz, cómo voy a pagar todos los billes que se vienen además de la comida. Y por eso estoy aquí para pedirles a ustedes que pongan la ley, un control de renta, una estabilización de renta, para que esto no siga para muchos otros como yo, madre de familia. Y no podemos más con todo esto del aumento de renta. Aquí están mis vecinos de Laurel, y con ellos yo estoy en esta loca. Hi, my name is Nubia Martinez. I live in 8110 Gorman Avenue, West Gate, a Laurel apartment. I've been living here in Laurel 10 years. I have six kids. Three of them are living with me. They go to school here in Laurel. And I get frustrated thinking that I need to move because I can't afford paying the rent. I used to pay $1,320, and now my rent went up to $1,630. Plus light, plus water, plus the food. And here, I don't know sometimes what to do no more, because my job, I still earn the same money. They're not gonna raise up my, on my job, and I can't afford no more. So I'm here to ask to have a stabilization for control and rent for everybody, not only in Laurel, but other places that is getting affected with this. I'm here, my Laurel team is here too, my neighbors. And I really don't want to move from here. Please do something about this, not for only us, but for everybody else in here. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a Ryan? Yeah?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for inviting me out tonight. My name is Ryan Washington. Can you all hear me beneath this mask? Sorry. I have a little cold, not COVID. I represent, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Apartment Office Building Association Metropolitan of Washington. We're a nonprofit paid association. We represent housing providers and commercial property owners throughout the metropolitan region, specifically the suburbs of Maryland, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Northern Virginia, Washington. Just hearing everyone's testimony, I can certainly understand and sympathize, as I too am a renter in the county, and you know, everyone's facing hardship. However, AOB opposes any form of rent control as it restricts our members from adequately recovering operating costs and providing affordable housing to residents in the city. Rent control disincentivizes housing providers from operating natural, current, affordable housing as a rent cap does not offset inflation and cost of, increase of cost for operating rental housing, for maintaining the property, for paying for staff, and all, et cetera. Our members are not immune to inflation and supply chain challenges, as many of our housing providers are facing significant rises in cost of water, electricity, gas, insurance, and property tax. Recently, the WSSC had received an increase in terms of utilities, and that is impacting members. Insurance rates have gone up for our members as well. The cost of this operating maintenance, paying folks, contracting third-party services have also increased for our members. Housing providers rely on rent as their primary revenue stream. Only nine cents for every dollar goes back to the housing provider, and the remainder goes to cost. Only nine cents for every dollar goes back to the housing provider and the remainder goes to cost of pay taxes, uh, which have increased, of course, throughout the county and region, uh, operating and maintaining the property. Many of our members in AOB manage an own Class B and C building that older and more, and more, uh, and offer more affordable housing for our workforce. They also offer lease renewal increases well below inflation rates in trends across the region. It's been reported that AOB members in Maryland report offering average rent increases of three point four percent. As you'll hear, a lot of the rent increases can be alluded to new lease, um, which is can be between seventeen and twenty percent. These new lease rates are higher precisely because of inflation and governments having imposed rent caps on rental housing over the past couple years due to the pandemic. These new lease rates are higher, um, and in an effort to bring housing units in line with the market rate price for the unit, once an existing resident leaves, communities are raising rent on units that are well below market rate. AOB members work to ensure residents live in high-quality housing that is affordable. Members are stewards of natural stock of affordable housing in the county, in the county and the region. Rent control hurts the people's mental health by jeopardizing natural affordable housing to operate. They face pressure to sell communities, convert their buildings into condos, or otherwise exit the market entirely, leaving many families in place. Uh, and with closing, AOB will submit comments. I know we have, uh, future conversations in November. Uh, we look forward to displaying solutions and bringing alternatives to help keep families and just build more housing, quality housing, affordable housing.
Thank you. Next, I have Eddie Moraya Magaya.
Buenas noches. Estoy aquí para, para pedirles a ustedes que nos pasen la ley de estabilización de renta.
Uh, good evening. I am here asking all of you to pass rent stabilization legislation.
Porque yo como padre de familia estamos sufriendo en casa el alto costo de renta.
I am the head of my household and I am the one that essentially suffers the, um, consequences of high rental increases.
Ahora no tenemos mucho chance para poder compartir en familia porque lo que gano no me alcanza para poder disfrutar con mis hijos lo que antes hacíamos.
I can't even spend time with my family because what I make now is not enough to cover, um, the charges that we're getting in our housing. So I have to work more and not do what I used to do with my family, which is, you know, spend time with them.
Ahora, con el alto costo de la renta, nos hemos tenido que ver obligados de pedir más horas de trabajo y poder evitarles a mis hijos salidas independientes. Ellos como jóvenes lo necesitan.
Now with these rental increases, I have been obligated to ask for more hours at my job in order to cover, um, the rental increases. Because my children, I don't wanna be unfair and ask them to help me cover the rent. They're young. They should be enjoying their youth.
Sé que tengo una solución. Y la solución es el moverme de esta ciudad que amo, me gusta, y donde hemos junto con mi familia creado una comunidad muy bonita, pero no me quiero ir de Laurel.
Many can say that we should move if this is a problem, but I love Laurel. Laurel is my home. My family loves Laurel and I'm not going anywhere.
No es justo que yo tenga que emigrar de mi país por la pobreza con la cual he vivido en mi país, sino que también tengo que emigrar de una ciudad que es Laurel.
Not only have I had to immigrate my country because of poverty, now I'm being told to leave the city of Laurel because of the same issues.
Y hoy la solución la tienen ustedes en sus manos. Queremos que nos aprueben una ley para que tengamos una renta justa.
And the solution is right in front of me. You guys have the solution in your hands. You guys can pass rent stabilization.
Amo la ciudad de Laurel. Amo a mi familia y quiero tener una familia estable. No quiero correr los riesgos de moverme de este lugar porque sé que la salud mental de mis hijos va a ser drástico porque ellos están en la high school. Ellos han empezado a trabajar y el moverlos de acá es quitarles la oportunidad con las cuales ellos han empezado a emprender sus, sus vidas.
I love Laurel and I love my family. I don't wanna go anywhere and more than anything, I don't wanna jeopardize the mental health of my kids. They're in high school. Right now, they're, you know, growing and getting to know their surroundings and their friends.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I have, uh, Ola Harbor. Ola Harbor.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Ola Harbor. I've lived in my complex for over five years. I'm here before you all because the rent has gone up at West Gate, which is a complex I reside in here in Laurel, right next to the municipality, outside the city boundaries, which is mind-boggling. That is right here and it's outside the city boundaries. I'm here to say that the rent hikes in the city are true because if that's happening to us, it's happening to everyone else within the cities. Our apartment complex increased rent up to twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent rent increase from three percent or four percent, which was the previous increase. We do not understand why or why the inequality. We tried to speak to the owners to enable us to reach an agreement with us. We sent letters that went ignored for two months. Two months, the letters were ignored. Schwemper Partners LLC is a New Jersey-based company that buys properties in Maryland and hikes its rent prices. They gave us no option than to stay united as a resident community and we went on strike. So for two months, July and August, we refused to pay rent. And once we did that, it got the attention of the owners. And at this point, they decided to meet with us. Eventually, with Martin Mitchell, Councilman Martin Mitchell involvement and Councilmember Dwight, they were present through those periods. So right now, there's an agreement that we had made with them. We all got some discounts on our rent, which will be through next year. But the problem is gonna be come 2023, what happens? I have anxiety and I think most of my residents people have the same thing, thinking about what will happen next year. But we'll be ready. If that happens again, we'll go back on strike. Today, I'm here to tell the Laurel City Council members, please, 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 let them know that we need homes. And it's not just homes, it's affordable homes. Affordable is a key word, something that is within anybody's reach. I can go for a four hundred and fifty thousand home, that's fine, but I don't wanna spend my whole life trying to pay for a home at this point. So we need the mayor, the council to prioritize rent stabilization at the federal level. Rent stabilization won't undo the damages, but it will help many working-class families. Having rent stabilization in place will send a message that is loud and clear, that housing is a right. Housing is, is a right. It's not a privilege or anything. That is something that keeps you as a human and gives you the dignity and the respect that you deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Rodriguez. Rodriguez?
Hola, ¿cómo están? Yo sé que ya esta es mi segunda vez. Eh, vivo en uno tres cuatro nueve Lashville Row, eh, in Laurel, Medea. Uh, estoy aquí hacia ustedes, eh, porque es bien importante, eh, que nos pongamos, verdad, que toquemos nuestros corazones y que podamos pasar, eh, estabilización de renta. Porque estabilización de renta es importante para nuestra comunidad, para nuestros señores, verdad? Eh, y es grande. Hemos tenidos maravillosos testimonios aquí en este momento. Entonces, les vengo a pedir como ciudadana de la ciudad de Laurel, que soy, que nos pongamos y que nos toquemos nuestros corazones. Yo sé que cada uno de ustedes tiene su corazón. Yo sé que el señor les ayuda, verdad, para poder estar en estos, en estas sillas. Porque sabemos que nosotros como comunidad latina, como la comunidad inmigrante que somos, hemos estado luchando para hacer lo que estamos haciendo, verdad? Eh, y es importante. La ciudad de Laurel es una ciudad, como siempre digo, es una ciudad hermosa. Es mi ciudad, es la comunidad, la ciudad de, de esta, de esta comunidad tan maravillosa que está aquí. Entonces, eh, es bien importante que nos toquemos nuestros corazones.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anna Rodriguez. Um, I live in one three, one forty-nine Lashville Row, um, in Laurel City. Eragono, say, this is my community, my people. This is my senior community. They need help. Why they need help? Because rent is going crazy higher. Stabilization, the rent is the most important thing right now. We gotta think about our seniors. We gotta think about parents. Parents, parents, they're not even able to pay their rent. They have two jobs. And this is not acceptable. This means we got, so I know you guys have a heart and I know you have a big heart. And I want you guys, I wanna ask you guys, please, hope, pass rent stabilization. It's so important because we have so many people here. This is our city. This is our community. I'm not gonna wear, I'm not want to go nowhere. I'm gonna fight and I'm gonna fight back. This means that's who I am. I'm here to fight back and I'm here to fight for my community. It just, just we can, just we can. Y si se puede, y si se puede, and just we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. And I have one more person. I'll try to come back to their name. If, if, as a matter of fact, how about we do this? If you signed up to speak and you signed your name illegible, can you please stand up and come to the front and state your name and address? If, if, if I didn't call on you and you signed up to speak? All right, all right, well. Okay, I'll, I'll move on to the council now. I'll give the council a time just to give some remarks before we close out. And I'll, I'll just go down the list. Um, and I'll start with Councilman Mitchell.
I want to thank everybody for coming out. I appreciate all this engagement around the city council meeting. It's, uh, the fullest I've seen this chambers. Um, of course, you know, I'm a new council member, but I definitely, you know, leaned into the community with my whole heart. And I, as I said earlier outside, I read an article last week about the New York Times and the title of that article was "The Rent Revolution Is Coming." But if any of you guys have been paying attention and, um, you know, have been watching, there's been probably two, three dozen press hits about the revolution going on in Laurel. And it started right there at three-three-two-eleventh Street. We were able to, as a city, you know, use these federal ARPA funds and, and work with the landlord to negotiate, uh, something more reasonable for the tenants. One of the things is outside of rent stabilization, which is the most important thing, and I say rent stabilization, not rent control. Because, you know, rent control is what we think of the archaic New York where they're limited to a specific dollar amount. Rent stabilization, uh, limits price increases and that's what we're trying to stop. We're trying to cancel rent hikes. And so, you know, one of the things that I've been urging is, I know we, we have the desire, uh, as, as a council and the mayor to, to pass a comprehensive package, but I think that rent stabilization is the issue. Um, it's the meat and potatoes and everything else, um, you know, can, we can benefit from. But that's down, that's down the road, creating more affordable housing. You know, that's years, months out. Um, but, you know, passing a rent stabilization will help thousands tomorrow. And with that being said, I appreciate everybody for, uh, coming out. Thank you.
Councilman Sidnor?
Just wanna say thank you all for coming out. We hear your concerns and, uh, we'll work on them. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Cole?
Thank you all for being here. We can't thank you enough. We have heard you. There's still a lot of work that we need to do on our side, but we are working on this. We encourage you to come to all of the further meetings, watch what we're doing. We are going to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman DeWalt?
Uh, just to repeat and thank you for all coming out, just to repeat what I said outside. And I'd like to get it on record since we're being recorded. Our job as a council to pass all such ordinances, resolutions, or regulations, not contrary to the constitution and laws of the state of Maryland or this charter as it may deem necessary for the good government of this city, for the protection and preservation of the city's property, rights, and privilege, for the preservation of peace and good order, for securing persons and property from violence, danger, or destruction, and the most important, and for the protection and promotion of the health, safety, comfort, convenience, welfare, and happiness of all our residents. And like my mom used to say, it's having a peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing at seven oh three PM and I'm, and I'm gonna leave you guys with, uh, my comments on our just. We are working on it. Um, we now have a different council, so it's a different makeup. This is something I want us all to try to be in agreeance with and pass. Um, we have proposals from Councilman Mitchell and Councilman DeWalt. We have some for myself, some from Sidnor, submitted to the administration and Cole as well. So we're, we're gonna come together and we're gonna do something, okay? And I, and I, I wanna ensure that you guys know that we're working on it. This is not, I'm not just saying this to you. I don't wanna just, you know, repeat and be redundant every, every meeting, but we're working and we have a special work session coming up. And I, I just think it's important you guys stay engaged. Don't just, don't fade away after today because I told you we're gonna work on it and you see that it sounds like we're doing something. Keep coming, even after we do something. Keep coming. So that's what I'm imploring you guys today. Um, thank you for coming out. And please, any more concerns, any new information, any new testimony, we're, we're more than welcome to hear it. And, uh, thank you for being in the city of Laurel. And with that, um, no further business to come before the mayor and city council tonight. This meeting is adjourned.